Okay, good evening. It's 7:02 and I'd like to call the June 30th work session of the St. Louis Community College Board of Trustees to order. Roll call, please.
Rodney G.
Here.
Craig Larson.
Here.
Mary Lukey.
Here.
Ann Marshall.
Here.
Devin M. Martin.
Here.
Thank you. We'll now get started with the workshop to discuss the STLCC Tax Initiative Proposition R. Dr. Larson, will you please lead the discussion?
Thanks, Annie. So our purpose tonight is really to talk through the strategy that we're using, both from the colleges' side and from the Invest in STLCC campaign side. So we have to be a little careful in this conversation because we're on college property essentially. We're electronic, but as trustees, we have every right to be involved in the vote yes side of this. But it's kind of a tricky, tricky scenario. What we're going to have presented from Jennifer Volk, who's here as the president of Creative Entourage, is the campaign manager essentially from the Invest in STLCC campaign, which is the vote yes side. We are actually lending her to some extent to the college to help with making sure our efforts in the vote yes effort are aligned with the college's informational effort, the college's obligation to make sure the voters know why we put this on the ballot and what it would mean if we pass it. Even to the extent of saying what would it mean if we don't pass it, that's a fairly common question. And why is this so important? So that's, that's what we're trying to do is sort of work together. In terms of tonight, I think what we'll do is have Jennifer talk through the strategy of the campaign. And Jeff, I saw you on a little while ago. Are you going to have someone from the college also talk through the other side about the vote, not the vote yes, but the sort of informational side that Jennifer would parallel what Jennifer's presenting? Or are we just going to have Jennifer present?
I believe that Jennifer Reed will present as well.
Good. I thought that was true, but I didn't want to presume that. So we'll hear from sort of both people that are organizing the campaign. And that'll give you as trustees a kind of an overview of the situation. You've received from the Invest in STLCC some documents in your personal emails so that you have some idea of where we are. We're kind of wrapping up documents that we're going to use in the campaign. We're launching on the 6th, 7th, so it's coming right up, but we're not, not quite done. We're using all the time available to us to edit and make sure everything's appropriate. So actually, you have an opportunity to see something that you would like to comment on and see if we're going to change it or send us an email, you know, as you think about it as time goes on. We don't have a lot of time, but we've got, you know, almost a week before we really go live. So anyone want to ask a question or make sure that you're sure what this workshop is covering before I introduce Jennifer? I might say for, you know, your use and for those who might be watching that I'm really very appreciative that a number of the trustees have gotten involved sort of in the vote yes part of the campaign. Rodney's working on messaging, Annie's working on community outreach. Pam Ross has been a brick, really. She's making a lot of phone calls on behalf of the vote yes campaign and is sort of heading up the effort to raise funds. And I might say as a nice little footnote that this has been a good week in the fundraising world because we now have enough money in the bank to be pretty sure we're going to be able to go forward with this campaign in the, in the best way that we, we had hoped we would be able to. Doesn't mean that we've got all the money that we might want. Doesn't mean I'm not discouraging anybody else from donating. We're hoping a good number of people are still in the process of thinking about and going to donate to us. But we do have enough money in the bank to be moving forward. So that part is really good and has relieved my stress quite a bit, to be honest. And Jennifer's too, I'm sure.
It's helpful.
So without any further ado, Jennifer is president, as I said, of Creative Entourage. They're a company, we looked at a number of companies and actually ended up hiring Creative Entourage and then kind of asked them to partner with Lefin Hilliard, who the college has used several times in the past. But we wanted them to be sort of a subsidiary because Jennifer's company is one of the only companies in the Midwest that really focuses on supporting fire districts, community colleges, school districts, probably school districts, the largest number of clients, who are putting together a bond issue or a tax levy campaign. And they provide a whole range of services. They'll do surveys, they'll help the public understand what the issue is. They help design the campaign, think about how you, how you reach out to voters, recommend even, you know, when, when you would go to the public or is now a good time? Should you go later? I mean, all of those kinds of services. And they've done dozens, small hundreds of campaigns. And they recently added to their employee list Rod Wright and several people who've worked with him. You may not know Rod. I actually know Rod fairly well from his 40 years of work in this exact same field. He's got a PhD from Washington U in poly sci and immediately kind of staked out this particular area of his interest to help essentially public entities design a campaign to do a bond or a tax levy. And he's, he's done, he's done hundreds of projects. And he expanded probably 25 years ago to Chicago. So I've worked with him in St. Louis. I worked for a while in Clayton and he's worked with the Clayton School District for more than 30 years. So I got to know him there, but he's also worked in, in Chicago and lots of campaigns up there. So really kind of added to the depth of the bench and I think made, made us feel really comfortable with Jennifer's company. It is a woman-owned company, Jennifer and her partner Elizabeth, and they do good work. So Jennifer, I'll stop talking and let you talk a little bit about the strategy of the campaign.
Sounds good. Thank you. And actually, when we started working with you guys, Rod reminded me that he worked on your 1984 campaign. So he's been in the business for a little while.
That caused Annie's eyes to dilate. I saw that.
I would have been a little too young to work on that one, so I like to give him a hard time. So we've really enjoyed the opportunity to work with the volunteers that are helping with the vote yes effort. I know Dr. Larson did clarify that we are providing vote yes services and that does not tie with the informational efforts of the college. And so one of the things that we're doing is making sure that those two entities are very separated and that no taxpayer dollars are going towards the advocacy effort. And we want to make that very clear. So if you do have any questions about the vote yes effort or if you'd like to get involved, just go ahead and send me an email from your personal address so that we're not using any college resources for anything like that to advocate for the campaign. So I would like to jump in. We have gotten started on quite a few things. And I put together a couple of slides to share with you a bit about the campaign strategy for Prop R that we've put together. There we go. So we put together a theme and message. And the goal of Prop R, we would like to talk about is that there are thousands of good paying jobs in our area that are waiting to be filled, but there simply aren't enough trained workers to fill them. Prop R on the Tuesday, August 3rd ballot would meet this demand head-on by ensuring St. Louis Community College campuses are up to date, safe, accessible, and affordable for those seeking quality job training and retraining that will help them succeed in today's workforce. It will also protect the investment we've already made in our community college and will benefit us all by helping our regional economy grow and prosper. So these three frameworks that you see right here is really our theme and message. So everything that you see about the campaign is going to fall under one of these three headings. And the reason for this is that we conducted a public opinion survey and these key points really resonated well with your potential yes voters. And so we were finding numbers up in the 70s and 80% when we were talking about statements like providing training for good jobs, providing access to high-tech job training, things like that. So you're going to see a lot about job training and also the safe, accessible, affordable community college and how that impacts our region as a whole. So when you see these things, it's all backed in data that we found by talking to different voters here in the community. A little bit of the strategy about what we're doing. This won't look like a lot of those typical November election campaigns that we all saw the last presidential cycle where there were yard signs everywhere and lots of direct mail going out and you were seeing messages pushed and pushed and pushed with those campaigns. The effort when we're doing a November election campaign looks very different than when we're doing a special election campaign like what we're looking at in August. When we look at a November campaign, there's lots of people coming out to the polls and they're already coming out to the polls. So our job during those campaigns is to make sure that people know about our issue and know that they would like to support that issue. We have another layer of what we need to do for this one, and that's actually drive people to get out to the polls and vote. And so what we like to do is look at your entire voter list. So there's around 922,000 voters within the St. Louis Community College District. And what we want to do is make sure that we target those voters that we think are going to turn out and that we think are going to turn out to support us based on demographics, voter history, and some other data that we look at to try to model who's going to turn out and vote and who's going to turn out and support the college. So when we start doing the math, we're estimating with a 20% turnout, which by the way is going to be extremely high. I think we're going to be lucky to see about 10 to 11%, but what we never want to do is come back on August 4th or the day after the election and say, boy, I wish we would have targeted another 10,000 voters. So we always start that bucket a little bit big so that we make sure we have enough people in the pot to come out to the polls on August 3rd. So we want to look at around 184,000 voters coming out. Now, if they all come out and vote, we would need around 92,000 votes to win the election. Now, if we look at that, we want to look at households. And so if we reach about 92,000 households, we're going to be looking at about 165,000 yes voters. If 60% of those actually come out and vote, so if our get out the vote efforts work like we hope them to and they actually turn out, we're going to be looking at just under 100,000 yes votes, which again is higher than that 92,000 that we're estimating you're going to need to win. So we should have a nice, secure number. Now, the goal is, what do we need to do to reach these voters? Our goal is to be, to reach each of these people at least three times and then get them to the poll on August 3rd. And all of this is going to start rolling out next week. We're going to be doing a lot of direct voter contact using the VAN system. If I know a lot of you, if you've ever worked at a campaign, have probably used that system before. And so that's where a lot of our data is. We do have some proprietary data that we're putting in there to kind of help that voter model and make sure that we're really hitting at those right voters. So we're going to be doing some direct voter phone contact through email, text. If budget allows, we would like to do some phone banking. And we're also looking at some volunteer phone efforts. We're going to be doing four pieces of direct mail, very strategic advertising spend. And when I say that, it's going to be social media, YouTube, Google, things like that. And then also we're hoping to be able to do some targeted, what you would see on Hulu, things like that. Those types of televisions, not broadcast, but targeted television to certain households. Fleishman is working very hard on some media outreach efforts that will be happening in the next week or so here for a public launch. We'll have a website up, hopefully live by the end of this week where people can learn more. We'll have a detailed FAQ, the opportunity for people to get involved and donate and learn more about the proposal. We have a team working on community relations, getting out to all of those different groups in the community that can have different influences and kind of who are the right people to send to those groups and to gain that support. We're trying to get an effort off the ground to have 200 volunteers, make 200 phone calls. Time's getting a little short and so we're looking into that. But that's something we would like to be able to do if we can make it happen. We have separated a group of volunteers into four separate subcommittees. So we have a group specifically working on fundraising, a group specifically working on communications, community outreach, and then canvassing or direct voter contact. With this particular effort, because we are being so strategic on these voters that we're reaching out to, we're not doing door-to-door. There's a chance that in some of these neighborhoods, you could have doors that are three blocks apart. So to try to put together a walk list for something like this, especially on the short timeframe for the planning of the campaign, it was going to be a little too challenging without bearing much fruit at the end. There's a much better way to use our volunteers' efforts for this particular campaign. If anybody would like to get involved, like I said, feel free to send me a note or an email. We'll help you get involved with the campaign and help spread the word about it. I'd also be happy to answer any questions that all of you have tonight. I know that there probably are some questions popping up and things like that, and we're happy to answer those.
You know, I didn't, didn't say at the beginning, and I probably should have, that the Invest in STLCC Campaign Committee is co-chaired by Dr. Mark Wrighton, the chancellor emeritus of Washington University and somebody who's really well-connected within the city and specifically around job creation. He was very involved in a recent effort by Greater St. Louis Inc. to the Jobs 2030 campaign, which is how do we as a region actually make sure we have the employees that we need to be successful and competitive as a region in 10 years? So he's really invested in that and he kind of made it, almost slid over from his role in that to being the co-chair of our campaign. The other chair is Dr. Candace Carter Oliver, who's the CEO of Confluence Charter Schools, five charter schools in the city of St. Louis. She's worked in, she literally worked in several school districts prior to taking that role. Is very well-connected and she represents the growing commitment we have to K-12 districts, where we now are working with every high school in the region to help them do dual enrollment and in many cases have some of their students actually graduate with an AA at the same time to graduate from high school. That's something that she got involved in about three years ago with the two high schools in the Confluence Network. So those two individuals are, you know, kind of campaign, well, they're not kind of, they are the campaign chairs. And I would say to the trustees that when Dr. Pittman and I talked about the advantages of bringing Dr. Wrighton on, one of the things we commented on is he's not going to get involved in something where he doesn't have a fairly strong say in how things are going. And that has proved to be exactly true. He sits in on meetings, he makes phone calls, he asks people questions. He's a brilliant guy and he's really been, been more than a little bit helpful. He's been extremely helpful, maybe particularly in fundraising, but I would say beyond that. So Dr. Pittman, do you want to introduce Jen Reed? And we'll talk a little bit about the campaign from the point of view of information out from the college.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Larson. So Jennifer Reed's here tonight. Kendra's on vacation and can give you a little information about what we've been doing at the college. And like many of you, this is certainly filling my days right now and most of my evenings with the information sharing that I'm doing on the college side. So we have some materials that we're providing. I've worked one PowerPoint to death. I think I have about the 14th iteration of that I'm showing in the morning. So appreciate everybody's support on that. Jen, do you want to talk a little bit about what we're doing?
Absolutely. Good evening. If I can screen share, that would be great. Let's do this. See if this works. Can you see my slides?
They're coming. Yep.
Thank you. I have two screens up, so maybe that might be part of it.
We can see it if you can't. Just change your display setting. If you just switch them back and forth, they'll work.
That didn't work.
There you go.
Oh, I went too fast. This was the button. Let me unplug my secondary screen. That may not be helpful. Let's do this.
That's, that's great. That's just fine.
Perfect. Thank you for your patience. Well, we missed the first slide, but that's okay. So the Communications Department is disseminated with providing informational and informational materials to the students, faculty, staff, and the community as well. To date, we produced an information card, a webpage, newsletters, and worked with Chancellor Pittman to conduct virtual and in-person town hall discussions with students, faculty, and staff. This is the sample of the new Proposition R informational card. It's a two-sided kind of heavy stock card. Dr. Pittman has some in his possession. We are also printing additional quantities, which I should be able to work on tomorrow, to distribute to all of our employees as well as our leadership team that they would have a quantity available at their disposal when they're out in the community or visiting with friends and family as well. So this informational card. And what's next? We are carefully coordinating media relations, informational pieces, videos, web, and social media with the Invest in STLCC Campaign Committee. We don't want to duplicate efforts and we want to keep the advocacy and informational efforts separate. In the last few weeks, we've kind of been in a quiet phase. But of course, as we all know, next week we're going to our public phase and we are going to continue to be working on emails and social media communications and producing more informational updates and materials to keep our community informed. And that is what we are working on.
Jennifer, we may have done a little bit of a spoiler today. I know we sent out my quarterly newsletter that had the Prop R information in there, which we also sent to all the employees yesterday. So we're starting to get out there.
Absolutely. Multiple touches. We'll take it. Anyway, we can talk to them about the information about Prop R.
So I think with that overview, we probably are ready to take questions and make sure that the board understands what it is you want to understand and feel comfortable with your own ability to talk about the campaign, talk about Prop R, talk about the advantages of it. Because you as trustees can vote and can, can advocate for a vote yes. As I said, a little awkward here, but you know, I think we can discuss essentially anything you want to ask.
Hi, it's Annie. Thank you, guys, ladies and gentlemen, so much for all of the hard work and nice seeing the Jennifers. I think this is a great pragmatic, doable campaign. It's, you know, we don't have any time, so we have to just. I think really, really, it's terrific. And I think the group that you've got. I know that I'm going to be speaking with a few people and I would love to know how I can get my hands on some of those, those information, you know, sheets. If I can come by the college and pick some up or, or what. But I think I'm going to be doing some in-person stuff. So sometimes handing them that is just a great takeaway. So I'll certainly, you know, I'm going to, my strategy always with these things, and please correct me and tell me if you, if you think I should do it differently, is I want to reach out with an email saying, this is what this is. I'd love to meet with you. I'd love to answer questions. And then after they say, absolutely, we'd love to have you, show up with, with the paper and hand them the paper, discuss it, et cetera. On that piece of paper, I mean, is early voting happening right now? Can, can we early vote now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, does that, is that said somewhere on that flyer at all or no? Or we just tell people? I guess people.
They have changed some of the rules as far as I believe that the COVID restriction is no longer a valid reason to absentee vote. So I think that it's gotten, they've made it a little bit harder maybe than it was back in the spring and also in the fall. But absentee voting is open right now. Certain ballots still need to be notarized or you can actually go to the Election Authority and early vote.
Ben's point is good, which is we need to tell people that if you're going to be on vacation that week, go vote. Here's how you can do it.
Yeah, I'll be on vacation that week, so I will not be in town. So I plan on voting, you know, as early as tomorrow. So I, it's just important that, you know, people want to wear a mask when they go to the election board, whatever. But it's, you know, it's, and that's the only place that you can go in person to do it. So it's, you know, it does take some effort, so.
Trustee Marshall, you may want more of what I would consider the brochures that were developed by Creative Entourage, kind of the vote yes brochures, rather than the college's information. I mean, you're welcome to the college's information, but Jennifer's team had developed something much more direct that you can distribute and we cannot. So.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
And Jennifer, do you have that piece that you could email all of us? Or do you, do you have the actual?
I've given her your email addresses, so she's got.
So we have a piece that was developed for the fundraising team to use. Basically, it was developed, I think, about two or three weeks ago. We're refining that message a little bit, but if you need something immediately, I can definitely get you one of those PDFs. By next week, we should have a postcard or something that has a little bit more updated messaging on it that we can use.
Next week's great. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. We'll get you an updated one. Sweet. Okay.
Just want to say thank you again to Craig and Annie and Pam and everyone who's working so hard and Rod and everyone who's working hard on the campaign and certainly the information. And, you know, I'll go back to our messaging of this really is a need for our community. And I think as a taxpayer, certainly we have to recognize that a lot of our people's taxes assessed valuation went up when they just got reassessment bills recently and want to recognize that there's a need for this, certainly in our, in our community to help the future, not just for buildings, but certainly to make sure we're providing the right jobs, the right training services, and to bring some jobs to the area as we do some refining. And so certainly as a taxpayer myself and just thinking about, you know, where people are at, I hope people support, support this concept and understand that it is not. Although the percentage may be a lot, quote unquote, when you look at eight cents versus the current 19 cents, percentage-wise of that may seem like a large increase. It really is. We are still one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Missouri for community colleges across the state and certainly want to continue to advocate for what the college needs. And this has been a long time coming of needing to get up to 21st century skills and training and facilities to really help our community thrive. And I do think this is one piece of the puzzle to help make the region a better place, not only for what we have to offer, but also for our workforce that is in desperate need of some very specific skills and training that are needed to help this region thrive, to keep corporations coming here and staying here. So just want to put that piece out there and thank everyone so much for all your work on it, but, and all the time and dedication, because summertime is usually a slower time and it's certainly another summer of crazy time because last summer was busy planning for COVID stuff and this summer is now busy planning for this. So I appreciate everyone's time and informational sessions that are going on to really provide the clear and correct information to our community to make sure taxpayers are well-educated to know what they're voting for either way they vote.
Kevin, I appreciate your comments. I'll just, two of them I'll just underscore because they're so important. One is we are the lowest tax rate of all the St. Louis County, I mean, all the Missouri community colleges. And we haven't raised it since 84. So if we succeed at this, we'll still be among the lowest. We'll certainly be below the midpoint. So that's a very good point to make. The other is there are so many jobs in the region that we could help with. And there's no better example than nursing. We've all talked about this on the Board of Trustees over the years, but we would love to train more nurses. There are 25 open, 2,500 open seats right now for nurses in our region. We are probably the largest, maybe the second-largest trainer of nurses and we're training a little under 500 a year. It'd be great to go up to 750. That, that, that's a good goal, but it's expensive to train nurses. We can't just decide to do that. We have to have funding. If we don't pass this, we really can't expand. Nurses cost us about three times as much, you know, to offer as the normal program. Plus you need facilities, you need labs, you need clinics. And, you know, those just don't happen if you don't have the funds to do them. So that's, that's probably the easiest example for most people to grasp. Everybody cares about having quality healthcare. But we also, we're almost the only place that trains ultrasound technicians in the state of Missouri. There are very few places that can get it. If you have an ultrasound in St. Louis, the odds are they went through St. Louis Community College. And that's a relatively expensive program for us as well.
I love, you may have all seen this, but I love, of course, Mark being Mark. He immediately got his calculator out and said, no, it's not a 40% increase. I just recalculated my tax bill and it was a 1.1% increase. and said, no, it's not a forty percent increase. I just recalculated my tax bill and it was a one point one percent increase.
For his house, right?
I love that.
In university city.
Now, one of the, one of the other, which I think is being lost in this, our hospitality management program is one of the other benefactors too. And if you think about coming out of the pandemic, there are a number of restaurants that, that just simply don't have the talent. And, and they cannot operate. My, my son happens to be a general manager of a restaurant in town and talks about the fact that he can't find qualified candidates. So i- if we think about, that's one program that we, we simply can supply talented folks to go into. And right now the restaurant industry is hurting. They, they can't even find people come in and do some of the basic work that they need. So there's another industry that not one of the big ones, but certainly if you're going out to dinner and you're wondering why it takes two hours to get through, to get your meal, there, there you go.
Yeah, we'll also see an uptick in horticulture. I don't know if you've thought about that with the, some of the newer products coming on the market.
We're one of the only places that train horticulture specialists in the region. Any other questions or comments by board members? We don't need to beat this to death, but we wanted to make sure you had a good understanding of the campaign and kind of had a chance to ask questions before we get launched next week.
I've seen the materials, Craig, and both Jennifers and, and it looks great. I'm really comfortable with, with going out and talking with, with other folks in the community now. So thank you all for the hard work. We're ready to go.
Doris isn't here, but she was on my morning meeting. She's helping us with community outreach and I'll make sure that she has her materials too.
Yeah, Doris, I'm just going to say glowing things about Doris right now. Doris is working with the churches and started listing off a name, names like this litany of churches that she has relationships with and she's really getting the word out that way. So a huge debt of gratitude to, to Doris and and all of her, all of her outreach, which I was just like blown away. I just was awesome. So that was great. That's great. So next week, should we, should, will, what? So next week, are, are we talking like the end of next week? Is that what you're saying as far as the sixth, I guess, yeah, I guess that's the end.
I, I think the intent is to, Jennifer, you can correct me because we just talked about this in the communications meeting today, actually, but the intent is to send out a press release, but embargo it on the, the sixth. And thinking that the extended weekend might, you know, we launch on the sixth, we might miss some of our targets. And then on the seventh, you know, really have a press release. So that, that'll be the literal opening of a campaign and organizing multiple opportunities to talk to the media about this. Dr. Pittman has been a terrific spokesperson for the the whole Prop R. I mean, you know, he, yes, he can't say vote yes, but you know, what he can do is explain why this is going to be so helpful to the community. He's got great relationships with a lot of the companies and spent some of the larger employers. I mean, largest employer in the region is BJC. Fairly amazing corporation and he's good friends with the CEO. So that's been helpful. And Boeing and Express Script, Cigna, I mean, you just all of those folks he's got connections with. So that's and that's because we train their employees. I mean, you know, these connections are based around they're reaching out to us to say, we need a program that provides us this kind of employee as they come out of a certificate program or as they come out of an AA agreement. We, we've been doing that maybe for a long time, but I'd say it's a special day of Dr. Pittman to really align us with those employers and make sure that when you come to community college, there's a job at the end of that process.
I have, I look forward to your lead behind, your collateral information. I've been going to a multiplicity of places that perhaps we don't always outreach to, particularly disability organizations and connections within paracoid commissions within the larger disability community. Right now I've been speaking with all the contacts I have from the multiplicity of years of VP Fair working. The theater community has been outreach, you know, certainly I've spoken to a lot. I've been doing a lot of volunteer work with indigent people and housing. And I'm pretty involved with being sure that people have displaced, have housing, and that's been an enormous challenge, both financially and in the amount of time. But when you go to those events and when you go to those places where you're helping people, you interact with the corporate people who have sent their company people to come there and work with those organizations also. Certainly, I'm working with the early and working with a multiplicity of organizations attached to the Catholic Church. But I haven't been able to give them materials. So I'm looking forward to that.
Great. If you want to email us and say, I need X number of flyers or send me a PDF, see if that's the flyer I want, then we'll print them. You know, we, we are printing more, more to demand rather than printing, you know, a huge amount and not we don't want them sitting around. It's, we've got vendors that can print for us fairly quickly.
I might have that PDF would be fine and I could probably get those printed.
And everybody wants a PDF, you know, it doesn't cost anything to send them a PDF.
PDF would be great if you could forward that.
Okay, we'll do that. Madam Chair, I return the meeting to you.
Well, thank you. Um, this has been great. I'm super excited and really thank you so much for the the things that you sent earlier about like the, how will the tax levy appear on the ballot, all these questions, when is the election, blah, blah, blah. These are, these are really good. These are good questions that we're all going to need to familiarize ourselves with and I really appreciate it. This is really good, good stuff. So.
We will have a website live next week. It's almost live now and it'll have frequently asked questions. You know, have a chance for people to donate, have a chance for them to ask questions that they don't find in frequent ask questions. And the college website will also have materials so people you know, can learn about this just by clicking on our website.
Yeah, that's great. That's super. That'll be awesome. So you'll send all, everybody on this, you'll send the PDFs and all that other good stuff to the informational pieces. Okay, cool.
I think Jennifer's goal is by the end of this weekend to have all of that material in PDF form so it can be sent out.
I actually just texted Elizabeth, who is my business partner that handles all the creative side of things. We have the first direct mail piece ready to go. And I just asked her to go ahead and repurpose that into an eight and a half by eleven to get to you guys. Hopefully there's been a year or two here. So.
Very cool. Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. All right. Anybody have anything else?
I know. We adjourn.
Martin. Motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by G. There being no further business, or I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty, there being no further business, this work session has, is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.